Yeah, we'll call to order the March 12th regular meeting of the Huron Board of Education. I'll ask Mr. Christopherson to please make note of the roll call. Right now, I'll ask everyone to rise as Frank Hines leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Frank. First item is the adoption of the agenda. The most recent agendas are before you. I'm going to make a couple of changes to the agenda. There's one item of new business, the Medicaid License Agreement for Medicaid Billing Services. I'm going to move that up to after the consent agenda and also canceling the executive session. And with those changes, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
They've moved and seconded twice to adopt the agenda. Those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's adopted. Moving into dates to remember, March 12th and 13th are Huron Middle School Parent Teacher Conferences from 4:00 to 7:15. March 16th is spring break, no school that day. March 26th is Board of Education meeting at 5:30 in the IPC and also the first round of certified negotiations. March 27th is 4th and 5th Grade Parent Teacher Conferences from 3:30 to 6:45 and also High School Parent Teacher Conferences from 5:30 to 8:45. March 30th is holiday break, no school that day. April 2nd is a vacation day, no school that day. And the rest of the dates are on the agenda. This time, I'll move it into community input for any items not on the agenda. Is there anybody present for community input? Seeing no one is rushing forward, we also have no conflict disclosure or consideration of waivers to consider tonight, so we'll move into the consent agenda. Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the following: approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings, consideration and approval of bills, approval and/or correction of the financial report. We have three new hires to the district that require Board approval to be covered by our workman's compensation plan. We have one contract for Board approval, Emily Cruz as an elementary vocal music teacher at the Madison 2-3 Center at a salary of $42,407. We have seven resignations, Kelby Van Wick, sideline football and basketball cheerleading coach, two years. Stacy Ernstur, tap classroom leader, one and a half years, effective at the end of the 2017-18 school year. Josh Trandle, Spanish teacher at the Huron High School with 11 years' service. And also Josh Trandle as an assistant varsity track coach with 10 years of service. We have Megan Wilson resigning as a math teacher at the high school with five years' service. And Megan Wilson resigning as head boys soccer coach after three years. June Wheeler is graduation coach at the Buchanan K-1 Center with seven years of service. And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4 open enrollments, requests to approve. And we've got several grant applications. We have, oh, I'm sorry, first we've got rehiring administrators for the 2018-19 school year. Their names are listed on the agenda. We need, we have a request from Mrs. Tompkins to accept the Prime Vendor Food Bid for the 2018-19 school year. And we have several grant applications. We have Darcy Haber for the Huron Post Prom, applying for a $500 grant. We have Destination Imagination Colleen Jensen applying for a Walmart $1,000 grant for creative problem solving. We also have another Destination Imagination grant application from the Huron Community Foundation in the amount of $3,000 for student education, working with the community to foster creative problem solving skills. Another Destination Imagination from Dakota Provisions for $2,000. We have Kelly Henrich from the Key Club applying for an HYLC $500 grant for Student Leadership Camp. Another Destination Imagination grant application from the HYLC for $500. And we have the Madison 2-3 Center and Huron Middle School Shelley Fuller and Heather Si applying for an HYLC $500 grant for mentoring. We have to approve the election workers and Resolution Board workers for the April 10th, 2018 school board election. And that is our consent agenda. It can be passed with one motion, or if any Board member would like to pull any item out, we can do so. And move approval consent?
Second.
They've moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? Okay, consent agenda is adopted. Okay, now we'll move into our first item of new business. Mrs. Waylander is going to talk about the Medicaid License Agreement for Medicaid Billing Services.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for moving this up. Mrs. Waylander is on assignment to go to Sioux Falls tonight in order to be part of a meeting there tomorrow, and so I appreciate you helping her with her travel. Okay?
All right, I am looking to approve a contract with a consulting group that would do our Medicaid billing for us. We have a large amount of Medicaid now. It's just increased rapidly over the last few years, and it's kind of becoming too much for the personnel in my office to handle. This company, my providers would log right in, log their service times, and then they would submit the Medicaid to get approval for funding. We still have some administration part on our part. My administrative assistant would still be in charge of entering the students, making sure the doctor referrals are in place, making sure a lot of the paperwork is there, but they handle more of the coding part of the billing.
Any questions for Mrs. Waylander?
Board, I would just state that we have reviewed this, and Mr. Christopherson has been involved in this process in order to make sure that it was a valid need of what we needed to do in order to handle all of these. So, I don't know if you have anything to add, Kelly, but that's the, this wasn't something they just popped up with. We've been looking at it as a solution.
Right. It wasn't that many years ago that we didn't bill any Medicaid, and I think last year we billed over 140,000 of Medicaid. And this contract's about a 10% commission to the company for doing this for us. So it's going to cost plus $14,000 a year plus.
We think that's a better way to go than to increase personnel.
Okay, I will ask for a motion to approve the Medicaid License Agreement for Medicaid Billing Services.
So moved?
Second.
They've moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions, comments? Seeing none, we will vote. We're voting on approving the Medicaid License Agreement for the Medicaid Billing Services. Those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Lori. Okay, now, uh... Turn to our superintendent as he celebrates the successes in our district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. We have a long list of congratulations this time around, and again, we ask that these be sent into our office, and Dolly puts this together for me. If there's ever anything missing, don't hesitate to share it with us in advance. We like to celebrate all the different things that our young people and our staff are working on. First of all, congratulations to the 2018 All ESD Wrestling Team members, Chipper Schillingstad, Tajae Jenkins-Harris, Travis Kleinsauster, and Wyatt Larson. Congratulations to the Huron School District Kitchen and Food Service Teams for receiving a solid 100% score on the second round of kitchen health inspections. Congratulations, both of our student Board members in at this time. Congratulations to Jasmine Snow and Gemma Keeler, the juniors at Huron High that have been selected as journalists for the 72nd American Legion Auxiliary South Dakota Girls' State Session, May 28th through June 2nd. So congratulations on that. Okay, congratulations to Mrs. Berger, Mrs. Cruz, and all the students who participated in the Huron Middle School Band and Orchestra Concert held Thursday, March 1. Great job. Congratulations to Mrs. Beck, Mrs. Cruz, and all the students who participated in the Washington 4-5 Band and Orchestra Concert held on Thursday, March 8. Again, job well done. Congratulations, this was just released this morning, to 2017-18 All ESD Girls Basketball Team Member Haven Hines. Congratulations to the 2017-18 All ESD Boys Basketball Team Member Kobe Bush. Congratulations to our Huron All-Star Hockey Club Team as the Varsity Boys wound up in the top four after knocking off a higher seed, Pierre, on their home ice on Friday night of the state hockey tournament. So congratulations on that final four for our boys that participate in that. Congratulations at this center of the table to other student, school board member Frank Hines for earning his private pilot's license in February. Now Frank, as I researched this, you said Dad has trusted you up in the air with him, but the project with Mom, that's, that's an unfinished business?
Yes.
All right. Is there a time when you would invite us to be witnesses for that event?
Unless you know what I'm saying.
Okay, all right. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a great accomplishment. Congratulations to both of our Board members. This is really neat to have you not only representing the students but active in your own lives and achievements as well. Congratulations to the following teams qualified for and advancing in the Destination Imagination State Competition. Three of our five teams advanced from regions to state, which will be held in Pierre on April 7. 8th Grade Structure Team A, known as the Drop Zone Competition. Team Managers Leah Gosh and David Jensen, second place in their region division. Those participating, Katie Schoenfelder, Cooper Johnson, Tanner Cronin, Roger Peterbaugh, Drew Artiman, Mustafa Said, and Stephen DeGeez. Second place 6th Grade Technical Team Webster Boys Maze Grace, Maze Craze, there we go, I got that better. Team Manager is Ms. Amy Pa and Colleen Jensen. Second place team was Gabriel Montoya, Nikkel Blut, Yer Sehey, Sehey, Kado, and Beauty Moon. And the 8th and 9th Grade PO Team, the Changeables, their project Outreach. The team manager was Bobby Matthews and Henry Morales. And the first place, they've received first place in their project outreach. And the team members Olivia Anderson, Raquel Sanchez, Maria Sanchez, Gabby Escobar-Salonic, Mackenzie Paulson, Asibia Smith, and Knighton Day. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Nevillesek. Moving into Board Reports, our first report will be the 2016-17 Audit Report, and we have representatives from Endor, Florican, and Olson here to talk about that.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Odegaard. I was the head auditor in charge on the audit that we started this fall. With me also is the managing partner, Jamie Eldine. I believe you have copies of the audit report. For the most part, most of these pages are right from your management. I'll go over the few reports that are directed from us and what they mean in a shortened version. The first one is our Independent Auditors' Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters Based on an Audit of Financial Statements Performed in accordance with government auditing standards. If we had any issues or problems, there would be a finding. Our results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Our second report is the Independent Auditors' Report on Compliance for Each Major Program and Report on Internal Control Over Compliance Required by the Uniform Guidance. In our opinion on that, Huron School District complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs. The third part, if there was any findings or question costs of any of the programs that we audited, they'd be reported, but we had no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or material non-compliance noted. The major programs that we tested was the Title I Grants to the local education agencies. There's no financial statement findings, no findings or question costs related to the federal award programs. And lastly, our Independent Auditors' Report. Our opinion on that is that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position on the governmental activities, business-type activities, and each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information for the Huron School District. There is some other required supplementary information. There was, everything was presented as it should have been in accordance with the requirements. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to take any of them right now.
The, since there were no findings made, I guess just so everybody's clear and try and get as plain English as possible, is there anything that you found that we as a Board or as taxpayers in the district do worry about?
No.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, since we have action later in our meeting, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the 2016-17 Audit Report at this time.
So moved?
Second.
They've moved and seconded to approve the Audit Report. Is there any further discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. Voting on approving the 2016-17 Audit Report. Those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay, motion carries. Okay, our next report will be from Mrs. Tompkins on the Classified Employee of the Month. We have Dorothy Wallman. Food Service Assistant Baker has been assisted, selected as a classified employee as a month for April of 2018.
Okay, good evening. This is Dorothy Wallman. She's an integral part of our kitchen, and this is your plaque for your Employee of the Month. Okay. Ah, I don't even know where to start. Please honor Dorothy Wallman as our Classified Employee of the Month for food services. She's many things. She's welcoming, revered, real, grateful, smart, caring, hardworking, thoughtful, reliable, and a terrific team member. In short, she is just a great team member. Dorothy's worked for food service for over 26 years, starting in 1992. As a food service substitute, in 2005, she accepted the position as assistant salad person at the middle school, and since then, Dorothy's become our baking assistant. Dorothy's very traditional. She arrives to work every day expecting to work hard. She's dedicated, does her best work every day. She's a pleasure to work with because she chooses to make work pleasurable for herself and everybody around her. She's more than deserving of these accolades this evening. We're very delighted to have Dorothy Wallman on our staff and as our Classified Employee of the Month. Please help me congratulate Dorothy. Want to say anything?
No, I don't want to say anything.
Thank you. I'm going to get your picture taken.
No?
No.
We'll get that turned around here in a second.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next report will be my land report. This will be somewhat brief here. As a session comes to a close here, we kind of know where we're sitting financially. One of the bills I'd reported on last time was House Bill 1045. It was going to transfer $7.2 million from reserves to the education, and that was reduced to 5.8 million. But along with that bill is House Bill 1044, which gives a 0.7% increase in one-time money to school districts. And then there was House Bill 1045, which, oops, I'm sorry, House Bill 1056, which is the general appropriation bill. It's giving 1% funding to the schools and setting a new target teacher salary of $49,131.96. So it's an increase of about $632 from last year. House Bill 1172 that I've talked about, this is the Public Meetings Bill that would require public comment period at every meeting, limited at the chair's discretion but not so limited as to provide for no public comment. This bill is on the governor's desk now. And the other one I brought up at meetings was the Senate Bill 83 about the patriotic groups being able to speak to the high school. It was signed by the governor, so Mr. Radke, get ready. And that kind of concludes my report unless there's any questions or comments. I mean, it kind of gives us some direction now going forward as we prepare to go into negotiations in a couple of weeks. Okay, if not, that's my report for this meeting, and we'll turn to Kelly for his Business Manager's Report.
Okay, tonight I have the General Fund Report for March. We're 67% of the way through the fiscal year. For revenue, we've collected $11,145,000, which is about 57% of the budget. Last year at this time, we had collected $10,441,000, which was 58% of that budget. So far this year, we've spent $10,735,000, or 55% of the budget. Last year at this time, we had spent $10,325,000, which was 56% of that budget. Things are pretty much right on track where they were last year.
Any questions for Kelly? Okay, then we'll turn to the superintendent for his report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just following up on the legislative report, and you do a great job. Tim, you've done it for many years with the area network for legislators. We'll, we'll have some numbers for you after we digest everything as far as the target and the percent, and then share the intent of the Senate with the one-time money as far as trying to move that target as far as we can move it, what the impact will be. So all of that just happened last weekend, and we'll try to get information to you as you, as, as we're able to put that together in the coming week or so. Secondly, I chair the Accountability Board to make sure that the money is used properly toward salaries as was intended. I had a meeting this morning with that statewide board, and the focus this year is on cash balances to make sure that the cash balances are in line with what is allowed as the, your lowest cash balance. There's a, there's a factor for that that's connected to the number of students that you have. If districts have more than 600 students, it's a uniform number, and Mr. Christopherson assures me that, that we are always below that cash balance number. And then in the coming years, the accountability will focus on making sure that the, that the average compensation that our district provided for teachers in 2017 is met or exceeded. There was some work this year toward making sure that it's tied to a percentage of the target increase, and that failed in a very, very close vote. But our legislators were, first of all, very clear in supporting the entire 1.7% that, that the Blue Ribbon Task Force and tax called for. They were consistent in that, and they were also consistent in supporting the accountability work that we were attempting to do. So thank you to all for that. Third thing I'd like to talk about is we're really heavy into the hiring season. As you know, last week, we announced our new middle school principal, Mrs. Willamson, beginning on July 1, and we will have within the week here a plan moving forward on the assistant principal, and we'll keep the Board and the public informed on that as that progresses. Today, I had five interviews, had several interviews last Friday, and you approved a music teacher tonight. Right now, we're interviewing for 5th grade. I anticipate interviewing for 3rd grade shortly. We are working hard at taking the incentives that the Board approved last year and being as creative as we can. We've advertised now for teachers in the district, and today we met with a regular ed teacher who was a finalist for a 5th grade position to explain to them that, yes, we have signing bonuses if you want to come into special education. However, if you would like to convert over from regular ed, then we have tuition reimbursement because it is so difficult to get special ed teachers. That if they want to go and get their endorsement and then serve the district in a sped capacity, that we will reimburse the tuition and the costs for doing that. So we're visiting with several of our classroom teachers right now because we think it is easier to, to find regular classroom teachers than special education teachers. So I thank you for the work that you did in putting either one of those in place. If they are certified and want to take a signing bonus, we can do that even with someone that's a regular classroom teacher but is certified in sped. Or if they're not certified and want to work through the program, we'll work at tuition incentives, whether they work for us now or whether they work for us in the future. I tried to ask each of the young people that we've been interviewing, or the veterans that we've been interviewing, is that, is our salary as competitive as anywhere that they are? Because we want to know, and I told them I will let the Board know if it's not. And our salary has been the top salary that's been offered each time, and I still have people turn us down. And so it's, it's a long and frustrating process, but we'll try to get the very, very best staff that we can, and I'll try to research each of the candidates that comes through so that I have viable information for you folks on that. Fourth thing I'd like to talk about is we're wrapping up our work. I serve on a committee that's working with the Department of Education on what in the past was called three-tier graduation, and then that all went away. And so we talked about a possible different badges that people could earn, and that has morphed now into, into a program that's going to the governor's desk for review in which it will be modeled after the teacher certification, where teachers get a teacher certificate, and then they have their list of endorsements. Okay? So we're going to do that with the high school program so that there'll be a, a high school diploma that everyone has to earn in order to get a high school diploma, and that's the one that will be approved by the ESSA nationally because everyone has to have a uniform diploma. Then in addition to that, there will be a, Mr. Radke, you might have to help me, a general, general post preparatory endorsement that you can receive. And that's, that's a general endorsement which ought to give you the skills if you want to go on to some college experience. There'll be a career preparation endorsement, and that one, I believe, we have to tie in with businesses in order to create internships and that type of thing. And then there will be the high-level college preparatory endorsement, which is streamlined that if you do all of those things and get a 24 on your ACT, you earn the opportunity scholarship. Really excited about the work that our principals have joined and I've been able to do at the state level on the two extremes. On the one extreme is that we wanted a way that we could work toward dropout prevention and, and give a diploma that students felt they could pursue rather than have the automatic disqualifiers of the second and third level of math, rather than work on an algebra 1- disqualifiers of the second and third level of math, rather than work on an Algebra I and then Consumer Math, and then Applications Mathematics, those types of things. So, we're able to do that and, and still have the opportunity to apply for a direct waiver if we have a student that needs something that is not reflective of that diploma. And then, the maximum endorsement, what really excites me about the maximum endorsement is we have offered boards for years the data that shows that if we could get our students to take the college prep curriculum and get a B or better on that and attend regularly, that the odds were very, very high in their favor, that they would receive a 24 on their ACT. Well, with the endorsement, now, parents will be making a decision right in their freshman year. No, you can't take easy courses and then think that you're going to get there, but you have to pursue that endorsement right from the beginning. And so, we're wrapping up that work, and, and that had, that had screeched to a halt because of some inner disagreements between different levels of the principals and the superintendents and the, and the curriculum people, and then the, much to my satisfaction, the governor got involved and said, "Let's get together and get this on the fast track." And so, that's where we're at. Mr. Radke, are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Report on the work we've been doing there. So, I look forward to that coming forward in some form when the State Board of Educational and, what's the new $40 term? State Board of Educational Standards. Thank you, sir. Meets this spring. The fifth thing I have and the sixth thing I have both involve the school calendar. So, first, the one that does not make me as red-faced, and that's the modification to the 18, or to the 17-18 calendar. We just had two snow days. Our snow days by the approved calendar go at the end of the calendar, so, as we've communicated informally, and I want to make sure for community members that know that where we were going to get out on May 29, we will now have school on May 20, or on May 28, we will now have school on May 29 and May 30, and of course, that could change if there'd be a late March storm. But that's where that's at. Now, on the 18-19 calendar, which you approved, I'm serving as a report tonight and asking you to modify it at the next meeting, for whatever reason, when we color-coded and counted the days, Friday, February 1, and Friday, March 1, were not color-coded. So, therefore, at the end, we wound up with more days than our contract with the teachers call for, et cetera. And I want to publicly thank Michelle Schoenfelder that, at Holy Trinity, they were working on their calendar and called up and said, "What, what's happened with these days?" So, we've got the blue highlight, and we just missed those Fridays. So, instead of that 2018-19 calendar ending on Thursday, the 30th, it'll end on Tuesday, May 28. Now, I would recognize, because we'll work on this at your next meeting, I will recognize that that's one day after, that's a Tuesday after the Memorial Day holiday. However, the odds of us getting through without at least one snow day is very limited. So, I hope that you're comfortable with May 28 being the final day, and then that allows us three potential snow days in May before we exhaust the month of May. Seventh item is that there is a board election coming up, and so, I believe that, that the board members that are up for election have been notified of a forum on the 24th of March. Have you heard that yet?
I haven't.
Okay? Well, I'm going to relay that to you and call Mr. Calkins tomorrow. The Chamber of Governmental Affairs should be contacting you to find out if you're available for Saturday morning, March 24 at 9:00 a.m. And they need to check with all three of you, and that's when the Governmental Affairs wants to host that forum. And again, there are two positions open and three candidates in the upcoming board election, which I don't have that date, and I don't want to misquote it.
April 10.
April 10. Okay? That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the superintendent? Okay, then we'll move into old business. Our one item of old business is second reading and approval of a change of wording in the student meal policy. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
I move it seconded. Mrs. Tompkins is here. If there's any questions, does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. Voting on change of wording in the student meal policy. Those in favor will say aye.
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 Those say no? Okay, motion carries. Our last item of new business is to renew the lease with the Head Start for McKinley for the 2018-19 school year with no changes. I'll ask for a motion to approve this lease.
So moved.
Second.
I move it seconded to approve the lease with Head Start for McKinley for the 2018-19 school year. Kelly, do you have any comments on?
Nothing's been changed in the lease except dates.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Are they aware of the project coming up with, with the state? What's going to happen in their front yard? I'm sure they are.
I don't know. I'll be talking to them. I have all that paperwork on my desk that I received about right before the meeting, so we can talk about that again the next meeting.
Need further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on renewing the lease with Head Start for McKinley for the 2018-19 school year with no changes. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? Okay, motion carries. That completes our agenda, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I move it seconded to adjourn. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those? Okay, we are adjourned, everyone.